I'd like to call this meeting to order. At this time, we'll have a presentation of colors by Inca High School, and it's instructed by Chief Master Sergeant James Eagle. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. At this time, I would ask for approval of the agenda, and we have also seeking a motion to amend the agenda to include the pool replacement project, stormwater closeout documents to the agenda. Could I get a motion to approve with this change?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Baldwin?
Looks like we have classroom teachers in the audience.
I know.
As I've said many times in the past, and I truly believe this, it's the central core of any success that we have in the Buncombe County school system. It lies on the high quality of professional educators, our classroom teachers, our administrators, and our support staff. And just one of the many examples of this quality is the number of National Board Certified Teachers in our system, which currently ranks, by the way, 17th in the entire U.S. Is that current? Stacia, we haven't jumped up a...
Yes. We probably said number one in one.
Okay. Number one in all of our hearts in the United States. But congratulations to the 28 teachers that are renewing their certification, as well as the 16 first-time recipients. And we're going to do a little bit better job of recognizing them as the agenda goes on. I want to congratulate our communications department and that communications team for receiving six gold awards. Are you wearing your medals? I understand that they were going to...
I'm watching.
Okay, okay. They also had one bronze award, but it's all about the gold, guys. So congratulations. That came from the North Carolina Schools Public Relations Association. And Stacia, Ben, and Tim, we are so proud of you. And we call them up here the little engine that could because they provide such excellent support and service to all of our schools and district alike. So congratulations, guys. The new Buncombe County Aquatic Center became a reality on Thursday, January 24th.
Excuse me. Woo-hoo. This is about time.
She doesn't have a clue, Mr. Vest, does she? That became a reality on Thursday, January 24th, and following a grand opening ceremony, and I appreciate the board for being a part of that. We hosted the annual countywide swim meet, and we're certainly grateful for the wonderful partnerships that we have in support of our Buncombe County Commissioners, as well as the YMCA, our great friends who represent our local experts on pool management and operations. Certainly not in any type of education program for a school superintendent. But a future project that we are so excited about, pursuing outside of the competitive swimming world, is the YSA safety around water program and the potential life-saving skills that could impact generations of our students in the future. Congratulations to the 174 Buncombe County school students that graduated last Saturday in our mid-year graduation ceremony. And many thanks to our at-large board member Donna Pate for providing such words of inspiration to those graduates. So we had a great time. And that has really become, when we talk about our... 10 years ago, and we were looking at opportunities to address our graduation rate and our dropout prevention, this became one of those programs that continues to get larger and larger each year. It's a great opportunity for some of those that need a little extra time. It's also a great opportunity for those that can complete their studies early and move on into post-secondary. So again, thanks to the board members that were able to attend that ceremony as well. And that concludes my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. At this time, Ms. Swanger is bringing some good news. It must be heavy, she's moving slowly.
Madam Chair, good evening, board members, Dr. Baldwin. We are here to celebrate good news. We have teachers in the audience and educators. We've got coaches. And all of these individuals that you're going to meet have self-selected to participate in the highest professional teaching standards work that we do. And it's called National Board Certification. And we're going to recognize them this evening. We have several that have done 10 years, and they're on a renewal cycle. And then we have some new ones. So I would like to invite Laura Meyer. Laura is an instructional coach that works with our secondary schools. And because this is a passion of hers, she also mentors our NBCTs in the process. So Laura, come on down.
It is an honor to be here for tonight's recognition of our National Board Certified Teachers, both new and renewed. Buncombe County Schools continues to be a leader in National Board Certification. Just as Dr. Baldwin said, our school system remains as it has for over a decade in the top 20 districts nationwide for number of MBCTs teaching its students. At 584 National Board Certified Teachers, Buncombe Schools ranked 17th in the nation, topping districts such as New York City, Dallas, Philadelphia, and Boston Public Schools. Making this ranking even more remarkable is that North Carolina's new and renewed MBCTs pay for the process themselves. So as you can see, the teachers sitting before you tonight are dedicated professionals who have joined a group of remarkable educators. Now I'd like to introduce you to one of these amazing teachers, newly renewed MBCT Cynthia Hallman, math teacher and department chair at TC Robertson High School. Cindy is currently in her 25th year of teaching. Both NC State University and Arizona State University have recognized her with inspirational educator awards based on nominations from her previous students. Cindy is respected and recognized as a teacher leader and as a student advocate by all who know her. She knows her content, but perhaps more importantly, she strives to know her students and how best to reach them. She is the epitome of a National Board Certified Teacher. Please join me in welcoming Cindy Hallman.
Thank you. I teach high school math, and my kids said I should start with a joke. And then they gave me some jokes. And I'm not going to start with a joke. I do want to start, though, with some thanks. We don't accomplish anything this big in a bubble. There are many people that I am grateful to. But I would like to publicly thank Laura Meyer for all the work she did to help me out with this. Laura, you're amazing. We're here tonight to celebrate all the teachers and coaches and counselors in Buncombe County who've achieved this gold standard of our profession. Through a very rigorous process, each of you has demonstrated your proven impact on our students. As both a parent and a teacher, I am so proud to be here tonight with all of you. In 2007, my colleague Susan Mavidi and I decided to try for National Board Certification. At this point, many of our fellow teachers at Robertson had gone through the process. And it helped that the state at that time was still paying for the certification. If you were lucky enough to do this with a friend, you understand how I will always be grateful to Susan for doing this with me. We were fairly naive about what kind of things we would need to do. I remember going to a support meeting here at the central office and having a really hard time understanding that this was not going to be me telling the National Board Committee how fabulous I was. I was certain my Teacher of the Year accolade would carry some serious weight. But I slowly began to understand that accolade was about me and not about my students. And this whole process is truly about our students. When we took on... When we work on our submissions for National Board Certification, we focus on the five core propositions. Through my own work, I feel the proposition that says, "Teachers think systematically about their practice and learn from experience," has made the biggest impact on my teaching. I can still remember watching myself for the first time on that whole-class video. I noticed mannerisms and phrases and was a little distracted of having to listen to my own voice over and over. Y'all remember. The lesson that I thought was so good was actually all about me and not about the kids. Yes, I had some great examples, and I had some engagement with the more vocal students. But the majority of the class was passively going along with my lesson. I do not think I would have realized this without the National Board Process. It pushed me out of my comfort zone and made me want to be a better teacher. Once you start to reflect on your practices, you can truly grow in this profession. The National Board Process helped me realize that my work needs to be truly student-focused. Reflection helps teachers make the shift from what am I teaching to what are my students learning? The shift from how will I teach this to how will my students learn this? While doing this arduous National Board Process, all of you grew as you challenged yourself to demonstrate your impact on your students. Over the last nine years, many things have changed. All our rooms have smart boards. Our students have their own computers. We are incorporating technology and movement and literacy skills in all our classes. While working on my National Board Renewal last year, I recognized how much I've learned over the past nine years. But that, I realized, is exactly the point. To be a National Board Certified Teacher means you're continually growing and learning. Kim Collins, an Olympic track and field athlete, said, "Strive for a continuous improvement, not perfection." While you continue to grow, you impact not only your students, but also your peers. And this ripple effect through your schools brings positive change. Your work is so important, and your dedication is recognized. Thank you for all you do for our students of Buncombe County. And happy 40th birthday, Summer Robinson. And Nathan, go Rams.
Thank you, Cindy. What inspiring words. Lots of truth in there. We would like to present a certificate to each of these individuals. So we will start with the Robertson District. So Dr. Baldwin and Ms. Churchill, if you would come down front. From TC Robertson High School, Mr. Alan Wilson. From Robertson High School, Elizabeth Ford. From the Robertson District, Cindy Hallman. Representing Glen Arden Elementary School, Amy Harris. And in absentia from Valley Springs Middle School, Natalie Henry Howe in SDs, would be Lisa Lemus. Let's give all of the Robertson District MBCTs a welcome. Representing the Reynolds District. From Fairview Elementary School, Karen Utsey. Katie Wallford from Fairview Elementary School. From Oakley Elementary School, Angela Ensley. Jennifer Griffin from Hall Creek Elementary School. Allison Rhodes from Reynolds Middle School. Jennifer Tatum from Fairview Elementary School. Jennifer Williams from Reynolds Middle School. Kristy Hurd from Kane Creek Middle School. Kami Jacobley from Kane Creek Middle School. And in absentia from Kane Creek Middle School. MBCTs. Next, we will have the Owen District. And Ms. Pate, would you fill in for Ms. Buchanan? Sarah Reimer from Owen High School. Lucy Lorenzo from Black Mountain Primary School. Shivers from Black Mountain Elementary School. In absentia is Brittany Club from Owen High School and Patricia Brzezinski from Black Mountain Primary School. Our two candidates from North Buncombe could not be with us this evening, so I'll just announce their names. Richard DeLaurie from North Buncombe High School and Jennifer Van from Barnardsville Elementary School. So congratulations to them. Now to the Irwin District, Mr. Bryant. Janine Haggard from Irwin Middle School.
That's definitely a rose between two thorns.
Well, here comes the next rose. Sharon Hawkins from Evelyn Intermediate School.
All I can say is ditto.
And Robin Pass from Irwin High School. And Jeff Titley could not be with us this evening, also from Irwin High School. Congratulations to the Irwin District National Board Certified Teachers. Inca District, come on down.
I couldn't resist.
Representing Pisgah Elementary School, Stacy Pavlina. Next, we have Laura King from Sand Hill Venable. Rebecca McCord from Inca High School. April Poet from Kandler Elementary School. Sean Beam from Inca Intermediate School. Amy Gaston from Hominy Valley Elementary School. Mary Thoreen from Inca Middle School. In absentia this evening, Michael Buckner from Inca Middle School and Suzanne Hopps from Inca Middle School. Congratulations to all the Inca District. And Ms. Pate, if you would come back up, because we have another category. We have an at-large group. And this at-large group, you will hear and see in just a few minutes. They range from curriculum coaches to central office, community high school, and Nesbit. So quite a repertoire. So representing Early College, Philip Johnston. Stephanie Buckner from Curriculum, K-12 math coach. Chris Cutshaw from Curriculum, AIG. Marg O'Hale, instructional coach from Curriculum. Jessica Vernon, a math instructional coach from Curriculum. Charlotte Green from Community High School and instructional coach. And Summer Robinson from Nesbit Discovery Academy. Congratulations.
Let those women tell those men what to do. Watch Chris Cutshaw.
And we understand that we would like to welcome you to stay for the remainder of the meeting. But we understand if you have to go home and do lesson planning for Friday, it's an early release. So thank you for being with us this evening.
Oh, look at this.
I see that baby on the screen all the time.
Well, congratulations, couple two milestones. That's nice, yeah.
I know, I mean, I come up here and give a speech.
They probably reprint it because I took that hyphen off my name.
By the 22nd for disposssession. Congratulations again.
Night, I failed to mention that one of our board members is absent, Peggy Buchanan. And she lost her mother this morning. And so our thoughts and prayers are with her at this time. Well, Ms. Swanger's back at the place.
I'm still here.
I believe we have a curriculum feature.
Yes, Madam Chair. We're privileged this evening to have one of our favorite partners in the house this evening. When I think of this partner and I think of the board's strategic plan, this partner hits all categories. All academic excellence, leadership development, family and community engagement, and even safety and support systems. So when we have the fortunate opportunity to partner with the YMCA, they are covering all of the strategic priorities in the work that they do that benefits our children so greatly. So welcome, Paul Vest. Our CEO is here this evening. And Tim Blanco is here, the COO. But we're going to hear from Melissa Waterman, who is our youth development coordinator. And she's going to give you an update about some of the impacts on our children. So Melissa, welcome.
Hi. Thank you, guys, for having us here tonight. We wanted to just have an opportunity to talk through some of what our partnership means to our community and to us. The partnership with Buncombe County Schools has been absolutely invaluable in letting us impact the community and achieve our mission work. The YMCA, as an organization, is the largest provider of childcare across the nation. Nine million kids are served every year. And in our organization... Let me introduce myself a little better. I started with the Y 20 years ago. When we had a single after-school program, we served about 70 kids. It was an amazing opportunity to work with a tiny little population and create community, which is really what the Y is all about. I had been working in a runaway shelter, trying to impact the lives of youth at a really difficult point in their life. And after about three years, I was just completely wrung out and emotionally drained. And my good friend, who had also worked with me at the runaway shelter, and then she had moved to the Y, said, "I've got the place for you to come and sort of restore your soul. Come work with these kids." And so I had... I went over and I started as a youth mentor at the Y. I was just taking it easy. And worked with a group of kids and got to play and see all the struggles of their family, work with them on their homework, make sure that they had chances to learn how to be friends and communicate with other people, which is sometimes the hardest thing for five- and six-year-olds. And that was always my favorite age group to work with. And I had this plan. I was going to do that for a year. And then I was going to go... And I had this plan, I was going to do that for a year, and then I was going to go on to law school and study juvenile justice and public policy. And it's 20 years later, and actually, in my career, I spent 15 years working just at that one site with 70 families. I knew everything about everyone who's had a baseball game, who needed help with math, and that's how most of our staff relate to the kids in your schools and to our community. When I expanded my role to work with our larger program, we had started in 2006, the partnership with Buncombe County Schools. Our YMCA programs had grown enormously from when I started. We weren't just one site serving 70 families, we were in 19 elementary schools, and we were expanding into the middle school programs, and we were serving about 1,500 kids a day in our after-school programs. It was pretty mind-blowing for me, just the scope of what we were able to do out in the community, and also just the degree of partnership that we have with Buncombe County Schools. And we have tried to build on and develop that over the past few years, really looking to make sure that we are supporting the goals of the community that you all serve, the larger community, and specifically, the population that after-school serves. The majority of our families are on some form of financial assistance, of 820 kids enrolled in our after-school program, 718 of those kids receive financial assistance, whether that's state vouchers or Y assistance. Our kids come from a lot of single-parent families, a lot of families under a whole lot of stress, and they come into our elementary programs, and our goal at this point is to hold on to those kids. What we've been focused on in the last three years is that these kids who need us so much in elementary school don't stop needing us when they get to middle school, and they don't stop needing us when they get to high school. So we have grown our focus to span the entire age span of kids who are in our programs. We have some pre-K programs, but it really, the real place to get started is in elementary school. And then when they get to the middle grades, we have the Horizons Program, which serves kids at no charge. We support our schools in having club-based programming, that kids can come one day a week, they can come five days a week. We provide transportation to remove barriers for families, so that we can get as many of them attending and engaged, because we know that kids who are engaged in after-school programming and constructive programming in the middle school years are more likely to graduate high school. We're also looking and expanding our teen programs. Our teen programs focus on civic engagement and community service, hoping to give kids a sense of empowerment and their ability to impact the community that they live in. We start all of this programming really focused on character development, and this has been in response to our community partners, both the school system and other partners in the community that we work with, and the recognition that kids are coming to school these days less prepared than 10 years ago. They come to school maybe not having learned how to make friends, not having learned how to sit and wait for their turn, more so, and we're having to spend a lot of time on social and emotional learning, spend a lot of time addressing some pretty large behavioral concerns. But we do that through a nationally recognized program that, because this isn't unique to Buncombe County Schools, the escalation of really extreme behaviors in elementary kids is being felt across the board, so the Y has developed some practice areas where we have specific curriculum focused around relationship building, empathy, responsibility, personal development, working with the kids to increase their social and emotional learning and their social skills. And this is an area where Buncombe County Schools has been able to support and inform how we structure our programs. We follow the schools' positive behavior incentive programs. We've received training and education from our teachers and our principals in partnership to address issues of trauma-informed care, to develop the systems and the supports to better serve our families and to hopefully enhance the support that the schools are able to give. But when I think about what we do in terms of our impact on the kids, I don't think so much in terms of the 1,500 kids or all of the families and community members, I think about the individual kids that we impact. And when I was thinking about this presentation, I was out at North Buncombe Elementary earlier this week, and we have a staff member there, she's one of our junior counselors, which is one of our teen programs, where it's a paid position, but they're under the supervision of another counselor, and you can start that job at age 16. And one of our junior counselors, her name's Catherine, and I met her first when she started in Buncombe County Schools out in Leaverville, and she was a third grader. And she was this incredibly shy, quiet kid, the kind of kid that other kids would trample if you weren't looking out for her. She was someone who was always ready to help, but really needed a lot of support to speak up for herself. And then her little brother, who was not that. He was, if you think about the character from the book The Wild Things, that was her little brother. And we had both of them in program, their mom was also very similar to most parents in our program, a single mom working really, really hard, and she would walk into our programs at the end of the day to pick up her kids, and you could just see it on her face, she was thinking, you know, dinner, bath, bed, just got to get through the end of the day, which is, a lot of our parents show up at 6 o'clock, their kids have been in school and then in after-school for a solid 10 hours, and they are just thinking, "How do I get to the end of the day?" Because everybody's exhausted. And so our job in our elementary programs is to make sure they're not hungry. We feed them a really good snack, to make sure that their homework is done, so that hurdle has been jumped for the parents, to make sure that they have run off all that energy, so that they can sit down and eat dinner and have a civilized discussion, hopefully. And when I was out at North Buncombe, I was just like, "Oh, Catherine, she works for us now, she's come all the way through our programs." And that is really what we want to do, we want to be able to hold on to these kids, we want to work through. With Catherine, it was teaching her leadership, it was teaching her to find her voice, and that is a lot of what we do. So we're working on achievement, relationships, and belonging. We want to create a sense for kids that they can do things. So we have projects in curriculum that follow the school day, sometimes developed in conjunction with teachers who come to us and say, "Hey, we're working through this, can you guys add on to that?" We want to make sure that the staff role model, really positive relationships, and that the kids have the opportunities to have their best friends, because our kids aren't playing in the neighborhood. During the week, they don't get home till after dark, so their friends are the kids that they know in after-school. And we want to make sure that we create that sense of community that so many people are longing for. When we get to the middle school grades, Catherine's little brother Sam is now in our Horizons Program, because that program has grown and expanded, it is now in all of the middle schools, which has been a dream of ours, and we were able to achieve that in the last two years. So we serve all of our middle and intermediate schools, as well as the elementary schools. And that program is really about community engagement, we have Feast comes and Does Programming, Amos comes, the Science Museum, we have Leaf in Schools and Streets come, and the kids go, and they perform at the Leaf Festival. And we have other partners that come out just to offer clubs and curriculum, teachers offer clubs and curriculum, and then they get to drop the kids off with us, so they don't have to commit to waiting for the kids who get picked up late. And we are looking to grow the kids' confidence, and you can see that happen in some of our kids. We are looking to grow our sense of community partnership, and we're also looking to have kids have a sense of connection and possibility, that they can do anything and achieve anything. Our high school programs are something that is fairly new to our community, but they're well-established programs in the YMCA movement, so we have Leaders Club, which is a civic engagement and service club, and we have now expanded that just this year to all five school districts, and we are hoping to grow that over time. We have a program called SILTS, the Counselors in Leadership Training, which is for 8th grade and 9th grade students who aren't old enough to have a job, but they can come out and participate in a leadership development program in our camps. And this past summer, when I was looking over the rosters at our camps, I noticed that Catherine's little brother Sam was in the SILTS program, and I actually walked into the director's office, and I was like, "Sam?" Because I had really vivid memories of Sam running through program, brandishing sticks, and, you know, just being a lot, and being that kid who you had to really focus on all the time, but that was years ago. And the staff looked at me like I was crazy, and they were like, "Of course, Sam." And I got to see him in program, talking to another kid, a little kid, that he was just kind of trying to help through the day, under the supervision of counselors, and he literally said to this little kid who was holding a stick and very angry, he was just like, "Man, I know, I feel ya, this stick is gonna get you where you want to go." And just like his ability as a 12-year-old, a 13-year-old, to communicate to a seven-year-old who was having a hard time, and get listened to better than the kid could hear from an adult, was really impactful. I also saw this kid lead our, the YMCA board staff came out to camp, and he led them around and shook people's hands, and it was incredibly powerful experience to see just the change that can happen in one kid's life. As the kids move into high school and into college, we have internship programs that we are bringing these kids into, and these are kids that we've held and known since they were four years old and came into our programs. And I think that the length of our partnership with Buncombe County Schools is so hugely impactful on what we can do and how big we can dream. So our dreams moving forward, we are looking at our successes so far, is the expansion to all of the middle schools, expanding our high school programming into all of the districts, and we hope to really grow the diversity and the impact of our teen programs over the next few years, that's a high priority for us, and to just keep the connection that we have with our little kids, and make sure that when they move past the stage where parents, they are desperate and they need us, to the stage where they still need, you know, middle schoolers still need constructive outlets, high schoolers still need it, but parents sometimes will pass on that. We want to deepen all of our connections to those families, so they know that we are here for them, just like you guys are here for them. And this is Catherine, who's been in our programs forever. And then I have a very short video of our kids.
Us means like, for me, us means like, so basically, us means like, a whole bunch of people.
Whole, like, a whole group.
Well, us means basically like...
Friends?
How about if it's you and your friend, that means, and like...
It means that we're a community?
Like, us being a group.
It's not just an individual.
A group of people that loves me.
Basically, it means together.
When you first start school, and you don't know who everybody is, and you're kind of nervous to make friends.
They like, help me when I feel sad.
So you don't just be like, alone.
Friends always help and be nice.
And sometimes you get scared.
They make you feel more confident.
They stand up for you.
How about if you're sad, I mean, your friends can help you become...
Say like, you're getting bullied.
Your friend can just come up and say, "You're not supposed to bully, that's me."
If somebody bullying them, just go up to them, like, "Don't, let's not bully each other."
They help each other.
Yeah.
And like, if you have something going on at home, friends can always help you.
Just like the type of friend that you have.
People together love.
Help other people.
If you need help, you just raise your hand.
It's all us working together to create something great.
We have best friends all the time.
Friends are good, because friends are good.
A family, my friends.
You want them to feel welcome and comfortable.
And thank you guys for giving us a chance to come, and thank you for everything that you guys do and how you allow us to come and support the community. And if anyone would ever like to come out and tour our after-school sites, please just let us know, we would love to have you guys. Thank you. I just want to thank Paul and Melissa and Tim for being here, and Vicki, I know you're here for moral support, so thank you, one of our top... That's right. But I tell you, I was here before the Y with our, with our programs after-school, and I think there's actually a couple of principles that not are as old as I am that can remember those days, and I'm just, just from the board's standpoint, the quality enhancement that has taken place over the years, and the beautiful thing that I've seen with the Y, they just continue to reinvent themselves. They reinvent themselves to meet the needs of the community, and as all of us know, our community continues to change, so I want to thank them. I think sometimes the after, the term after-school suggests there's a, there's an end to the, to the school and what we do, and then this is a new program, but that's not the case, it's an extension of the school, and that's what makes it so special. So guys, thank you for what you do and your partnership, because it means so much for, for our kids. I'm particularly impressed with the program that you talked about, the middle school and high school, I wasn't aware of that, and I think that's grand. I've had some personal observation in the elementary, primary and elementary school, but, you know, middle school kids, they lose it. They're big enough, but they're not big enough, and that, your program, I would think, would come in and help salve that situation, and help them, as well as their parents, learn how to deal with each other. And thank you. Are we through? Okey-dokey. Now it's time for the action agenda. We have a public comment that I had overlooked, I apologize.
Yes, ma'am, we have one public comment this evening. Catherine Rosfield of Asheville has signed up.
Thank you.
Please take your way to the podium.
Hi, good evening, thank you all.
Ms. Ross, I was, real quickly, if you can push restart that, you'll see there's a little clock right here in front of Mr. Bryant.
Ah.
I think that when that hits, you have three minutes, when that hits 2 minutes 30 seconds, I think you'll see the yellow light up, and then when the red lights up, it's, that's time.
I will stay with my time, thank you.
I wanted to let you know.
Okay. Thanks, thank you. All right. Well, this was a fun evening to be here and see all those teacher awards, so I'm glad I got to see that. My name is Catherine Rosfield, I am the mother of two elementary school children. I also serve on our school's PTA, I have a day job, and in my spare time, I also work for some organizations that seek solutions for climate change. So, and that's what brings me here today, that is why I've dragged my children here to this meeting, because I believe that climate change is the world.
change is the world's biggest challenge that we face. Global warming is real and the science is solid. The unprecedented increase in greenhouse gases, coupled with a 40-year response lag, means that we need bold action now to protect our sons and daughters and generations to come from shouldering an enormous burden of global warming. The longer we wait to take action, the greater the effort and cost to reverse the warming trends will be. We have the tools and technology to do this, but what we lack is the political will. So I'm here today to ask you all, as community leaders and advocates for children and youth, to support a nonpartisan Schools for Climate Action Resolution in defense of our current and future students. The National School Board Association will be considering a resolution at their meeting next month. And I have that resolution, which I can read in a minute and 26 seconds, I think. It says, "NSBA recognizes and understands the significant negative impacts that rapid and ongoing climate change has on America's schools, students, and their communities. NSBA urges the Congress and Administration of the United States to provide mitigation for the effects on our communities. Specifically, NSBA advocates for funding for schools' infrastructure needs and emergency funding for disaster relief caused by natural catastrophes and extreme weather events. Furthermore, NSBA urges a reduction of carbon emissions and an increase in carbon-free electricity production to slow the rapid progression of climate change and its effects on America's schools, students, and communities. Additionally, NSBA encourages states to adopt a curriculum that addresses the changes that climate change puts on our communities and equips students with the knowledge necessary to slow such changes." So I urge you all to consider that. And I just want to thank you all for all of your contributions to our community, for everything that you all do. And any action that you all take on climate change today will make a generation for, make a difference for future generations. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. You can leave a copy of that with Ms. Swanger. I guess I should have said it with you. Okay, thank you very much. We are now ready for the action agenda. And the first item is the Budget Amendment Number Three. Do, I'm looking for a motion to approve this Budget Amendment.
I have some quest, a question.
All right, Ms. Frisbee. I noticed a migration of our staff to the far left and up to the top. I was curious about that. Oh, we moved the table and so that's what we do. Yeah, excuses are all we have.
So my question is about the state, a change in the state public school fund. We have a change in PRC 001 classroom teachers of 2,400, a reduction of $2,470,902. And that seems like a lot of money. And so I just want to, how are we handling that and just, so that the public can understand that this doesn't mean that we are having to lay off $2 million worth of teachers?
Sure, that's a great question. This was a very busy Budget Amendment.
Yes. We were very late in getting our Higher Month One, Two ADM adjustment. That didn't come until January the 18th. So seven positions, we lost seven teaching positions because of that reduction. It was a reduction of 291 students. So there's seven of them. And then we transferred 27 positions from 001 to PRC 020, which is our visiting international faculty teachers, our foreign teachers. So that, that's the biggest chunk. We actually only lost seven positions here in the middle of the year, but, but we can manage that without having to lay off seven people. Is that what you're saying? Yes, we, we projected close to what we thought the reduction would be, so we accommodated that for in, in the local budget. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Frisbee? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
All those in favor, in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now you get to walk all the way back up there. All right, second item in the action agenda is the Letter of Intent to Purchase with E-Rate Related Networkwork Switches. It's, Mr. Pace, do we have questions from the board?
I'm not smart enough to ask any questions on that one.
We're gonna mark that down, Mr. Pace.
I have, I have one, Mr. Pace, if you could...
Pat's smarter than I am, so he can do it.
No, I'm getting ready to, to throw myself under the bus. I'll wait till he comes down. Help me if you can, in English. Fifth grade English, that's about where I am, I think, sometimes, to understand exactly what's going on here as it relates to refreshing the one-to-one devices.
That doesn't mean a drink of coffee in the middle of the afternoon, does it?
So I need to, and good evening. I need to ask for clarification. So are you asking a question about refreshing switches, network switches?
I want to understand what this is we're about to vote on.
It's not about one-to-one, I don't think.
Mr. Bryant, we're on the, the network switch, which is the agenda item before the one-to-one initiative. Did I open the wrong one?
Yes. Letter of intent for purchase of E-Rate-related networks.
I did, I opened the wrong, went and run down the wrong one. See, I told you I was gonna do that.
It's okay, but we can ask Mr. Pace to stay.
I'm gonna have some questions about the next one.
Okay. All right, so, we're voting on the E-Rate related network switches? Oh, you've got a question?
I do have a question. I had a moment with Barry before we came in, but I'd just like to publicly ask this question and let you respond. I think your response you gave me is fairly clear. But when I looked over this document, I mean, we're asked to approve quite a bit of money. But the thing that struck me is I looked at all of the totals for each individual school district, there was a stark, stark difference between three school districts, that being Woodfin Elementary, Inca Intermediate, and then also Pisga Elementary. The amount of money they're receiving, each one of those schools, is $5,840. I just randomly, well, I don't, compared to TC Roberts, I think a hundred and, almost $140,000. And I understand the size and the complexity of the buildings and that kind of thing. But I just want to be absolutely sure that we have parity across this entire school system, like to like. And I realize there's probably differences between elementary schools K through, through fi, or through four, and then versus your high schools. I understand that. But I want to be sure every individual student in every school is, is fairly treated. And can you speak to that for a minute?
I'll be glad to, thank you. So our switch infrastructure currently is equitable across the district and supports all 2,550 wireless access points that we have across the district, one in each classroom and then common areas and et cetera. And so some of those switches are nearing end of security updates. 2960Ss, to be specific, Cisco switches are almost to end of security updates, meaning they no longer get security patches. So we are using the E-Rate Program, the federal E-Rate Program, along with North Carolina School Connectivity Initiative, to upgrade our switch infrastructure that supports our wireless. And the E-Rate Program only allocates $156 and some change per student over a five-year rolling window for this type of network infrastructure purchase. So you can purchase switches, you can purchase wireless access points. Based on your E-Rate discount, you only get a certain percentage of that amount. So we have an 80% E-Rate discount based on our free and reduced lunch being in that 50% plus range. And so we only get 80% of that 156 per student. And so at the smallest schools, that's only enough to really buy one switch. And at the larger schools, there's more because we have more students there. Also, at Inca Intermediate, when we opened Inca Intermediate, we leveraged the E-Rate Program for network infrastructure there, switches and wireless access points. So there's only one switch in this for Inca Intermediate because we used that money when we built it. And so until the five years is up, this is all the money we have in the E-Rate Program. So the plan is, we're gonna upgrade all of our switches to M-Gig capable switches in preparation for me coming back to you in a year to two years to do the same thing for our wireless access points. At schools like Inca Intermediate, there'll be money available to do some additional switches and access points. And then at schools like Woodfin, Pisga, where there's not enough E-Rate money because of the per-student amount, I'll supplement that from other sources of funds. So it will be equitable across the board. And when 802.11AX, the next generation of Wi-Fi, is available in the devices, in 2020, we plan to be prepared to leverage that from then forward with our networking infrastructure, specifically the switches and the access points. So that's the plan.
So bottom line is, all students are being treated equally?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Max's question is very important for all of us. All right, all those in favor of the Letter of Intent to Purchase E-Rate Related Network Switches?
We don't have a motion.
I don't think we have a motion.
Do I have a motion?
I think you have one yet.
Okay, I'm still thinking about E-Rate over here. So could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we're moving to the Award Contract for One-to-One Student Device Refreshment System Wide. And that...
I have my question. If you can help me to understand a little bit more exactly what's going on here and what we're doing.
Okay. So when we began our digital learning initiative and created the plan, the timeline for implementing a digital device per student, we established a plan, you know, for three grade levels, starting with fourth, fifth, and sixth. I've said it many times, January fourth, fifth, and sixth of 2016. So it's easy to remember there. And then the following year, we rolled out to seven, eight, and nine. And then the following year, 10, 11, 12. And then this year was K3. So we are to the point now where we're entering the lifecycle sustainability refresh or replacement phase of the digital learning initiative. And so that was the plan from the beginning. And you have battery life that begins to wane, depending on the charge cycles the device has gone through after four years. And you have aging, you know, processors in the devices. So the Generation Two Yoga 11E that we started with had a N2940 processor. We've gone through three subsequent iterations of those processors. And the, you know, it's time to replace those devices. So this RFP is initially to replace all the four, five, and six devices next fall. So that will remove our Generation Two Yoga 11E devices. And we have Gen Three, Gen Four, and Gen Five that will then replace in subsequent years.
And I think I understand this right, but the one-to-one devices are, I don't know what the right term is, but, but they're synced or they're in, they're in unison with instructors' devices as well. Is that correct? And are we accounting for that for classroom teachers and wherever all, not just the student devices, but the other devices as well?
So we do have a number of Yoga 11E devices that teachers are using now that have been purchased in partnership with principals. Those Yoga 11E devices, some of which are processor-specific to a teacher order, those are in, you know, the hands of teachers currently. And, but not every teacher has that device. Some teachers have a Dell machine now, et cetera. So with this lifecycle refresh, my intention is that after we have these Dell 3190 two-in-one devices in our go mode for our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, we will sell the Gen Two Yoga 11E. My intention is to sell those for a minimum of $50 apiece. And ideally, that then creates an opportunity to reinvest into teacher devices, so staff device refresh. And with this device being, that we've selected, that the committee selected carefully, with it being a Pentium processor as opposed to a Cellar-on, with it being an eight-gig memory device, so eight gigabytes of memory instead of four, 128 gigabyte SSD, this makes a great teacher device as well. And so instead of having to pay more for the teacher device to get a Pentium processor, now we can buy the same device that we buy for students for teachers at $400 plus tax. So that opens up the door for, you know, doing more teacher device refresh as we move forward and teachers understanding the plan, this is where we fit in. And so it kind of works moving forward in that manner.
I mean, and maybe I'm wrong, but it would seem like it, it would be very important for us to make sure that we're keeping up, and maybe I'm wrong, but we're keeping up with those teachers' devices. It won't do any good if the students have got them and we don't have somebody, A, that's trained, but B, has the corresponding technology to be able to work with those students and to help them from their own device of some kind. Am I right in that thought?
Right, right. So ideally, we sell 5,500 Gen Two Yoga 11Es for $50.
Is there a market for that at $50?
There is, there is. I feel comfortable, you know, throwing that figure out there. So if I wasn't, you know, I wouldn't throw it out there. But the, you know, that generates a quarter of a million.
Yeah.
Okay? If our capital committee, you know, is able to allocate, you know, a similar amount, then that creates a, an amount that goes into a four-year lifecycle refresh-type deal for staff as well. So when you're talking about, you know, 2,000-plus teachers, you know, you still have a lifecycle to that process as well. So, you know, this, it gets us to that place of sustainability.
Moving forward.
Other questions, board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, thank you, Mr. Fairley, but you...
Thank you, it's a great device, thank you.
You are not Mr. Fairley, are you? Okay, this is, the next item is Clyde A. Erwin High School Kitchen Renovation Project, Authorization to Award the Contract. Do board members have questions about this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we move on to Hawk Creek Elementary School Approval of Design Contract for Additions and Renovations. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve this request.
Thank you. I'll need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item, Hawk Creek Elementary School Lease and Uplift Cost of Modular Units for Construction Project. Are there questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I would just add a thought on this for the, for the public's consumption. We, and I appreciate Mr. Fairley, Mr. Wyatt, gave us a pretty lengthy, we had a nice discussion earlier this afternoon, it was Oakland to the public, but they, there were some questions that were asked, that were answered, to help all of us understand this better and to be comfortable with where we're going with it, so.
All right, no questions from the board. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving right along. Fairview Elementary... Moving right along, Fairview Elementary School Approval of Design Contract for Renovations, any questions from the board?
I don't have a question, but I would just like to point out that this renovation of the, of Fairview Elementary School is made necessary by the unfunded mandate at the state level that we change classroom size for K through 3, and so we are complying with that and having to do a lot of work to do so.
And looking forward, being a forward thinker, isn't it?
Absolutely, preparing for it now.
Right. So anybody else? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item about INCA Middle School Capital Outlay has been asked to be removed by staff. The next item on the agenda is the Pool Replacement Project Stormwater Closeout Documents, and other questions from the board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On the consent agenda, we have the minutes of January 10, the regular meeting, open session, the personnel report, approval of board members' training credits, and I just want the public to know that we have been trained in ethical procedures by our attorney...
At least three of us have.
We have all been trained, but you have currently been trained, yes. And then the award system for Widesoul Source of Paving Agreement, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
And second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You have in your information agenda a listing of the finance reports and then the policies that are up for first reading. Our next board meeting will be March the 4th, and there will be a work session, is that correct?
It's March 7th.
What did I say, March 4th? March 4th is the only date in the calendar that is a command, and it comes out in me all the time, March 4th. Excuse me, the date is March the 7th, and the work session will be next to that? Yes or no? Maybe?
I'm not sure.
Well, we'll see what happens with that. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second? Any opposed? You want to stay all night? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.